Okay, the time being six o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Read this statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which is general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And the first item on the agenda is a appointment of a temporary town clerk, as we all know.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt for just half a second, and I apologize, but one of the requirements for these meetings, and it's one that I think has been overlooked by a number of towns, is that because the meeting is being held remotely, that the chair announced the names of all members who were attending remotely. The reason that I bring this to your attention is that we're currently addressing a few open meeting law complaints and addressing this specific issue. So I've been bringing this to the attention of all the boards and commissions that I'm dealing with. So what is useful going forward is you could address this by having a quick roll call vote of all of the members to announce their participation by remote. So if I may bring that to your attention before we begin a substantive agenda.
Very good, Mark. Thank you for keeping us on board. So with that, that it's a remote participation, I will call for each member to announce their name and that they are present.
Megan Triano, present.
Deborah LeBlanc, present.
Mike Daniels, present.
John Sad, present.
And Dennis Lamash, present. So we have our entire board, plus our town manager. Jen Callahan is also present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. So as I started to say, the entire board's aware that the manager has put out an advertisement for a town clerk and had no luck at all due to our residency requirement. And then she put out announcement for a temporary town clerk and had a couple of people, and she has brought this down to one particular person that she's presenting tonight. I know there's some, the board has, is split on what a temporary town clerk is all about. And we had a lot of discussion previously, so I've been in contact with Mark Rich and talked to him in depth about this whole process and procedure. So I'm going to ask him, he's only got a limited time with us tonight, so I'm going to ask him to, if he could clarify this whole issue to the board before we get started, and then he'll be able to to go on with his other duties. So Mark, if you don't mind, if you could just strengthen us out a little bit about how important this whole process is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always a pleasure to be before the Board of Selectmen in Oxford, and I think you're probably seeing me more than you'd want to usually. But to try to jump into this very quickly, I've been speaking with the town manager quite extensively regarding the issue of appointment of a temporary town clerk. And with the upcoming national election and all the issues that are ongoing, there are many, many pressures on municipalities with respect to voters' rights and managing ballots, absentee ballots, mail-in ballots. We were just dealing with this weekend with something known as the Uakava ballots, which are the ballots issued to residents who reside overseas. And with all these issues, in fact, the Uakava ballot issue really arose because of the potential for action to be taken by the Department of Justice, taking enforcement action against municipalities that don't comply with the requirements of issuance of timely overseas ballots. So there are many opportunities where the town clerk must guide the town during an election process, the post-election process, and in addition to the day-to-day duties as the town's public records keeper and issuing of certain licenses and other documents. The failure to comply, say, with the old meeting law, or the public records law, rather, could result in penalties against the town, including payment of attorney's fees to individuals who who are not able to obtain the documents in a timely fashion under the new and revised public records law. I know that Lori Kelly has been very good at writing heard over the the public records process, and that is an important duty of the town clerk above and beyond the duties during the election process. Failure to comply with elections requirements can result in, as I mentioned, actions by the Department of Justice in assuring that, particularly with the federal election, that federal election laws are adhered to. You could have issues with the Secretary of State's office or Secretary of the Commonwealth in Massachusetts with respect to failure to comply with state statute and state requirements. And we do interact with the Elections Division very often and try to head off those issues when they arise, usually taking advantage of a town clerk who can jump in and effectively stave off any problems that you would run into. So we're in a unique situation. Obviously, Oxford has a residency requirement, as the chairman mentioned. And so based upon that residency requirement, it is a little more difficult to find someone to commit to this position on a permanent basis. The provisions of chapter 41, section 14, allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint a temporary town clerk, not an acting town clerk, but a temporary town clerk who can step into the shoes of the town clerk, but by statute does not need to be a resident of the town. That individual would serve at the pleasure of the board until the new appointment is made by the town manager. So this person would be an at-will employee. The statute does not confer upon the individual a term. And I emphasize that because I know there was some discussion about term and limiting the period that this individual might be appointed. And I do agree that that does make it more difficult to find someone who's willing to take that position because they're looking at essentially an automatic termination date, as opposed to being able to carry out these duties for the extended period until the new appointment is made. But keep in mind that uncertainty in that office and limitation on an appointment, again, almost an arbitrary deadline for limiting appointment, could result in instability in that office and difficulty maintaining and keeping up with all the obligations that I listed earlier. And again, where the individual serves at the pleasure of the board, the issue of what to do about that person if the job didn't work out for that person, now that's something that could be taken up by the board. Again, the person works on an at-will basis, serves on an at-will basis. So you have that ability to address that issue. But again, I think it's very important. You've had a town clerk for a very long time. Obviously, this is a difficult process to fill Lori's very large shoes. But at the same time, I think you would benefit from my experience in dealing with other, many other municipalities. You benefit from the stability, even with respect to the temporary town clerk, of having that person in that position for the entire period and then handing it off to the successor appointee town clerk once all the issues of residency, or as we're trying to address that through the town meeting process, whether that's changed or whether that remains. But I think, especially given the circumstances we're in right now, not only the pandemic, but a very contentious national election and many, many other issues, I get emails almost every day, our office gets emails every day, from town clerks trying to figure out how to deal with electioneering and campaign issues and how to deal with early voting and the early voting locations and what's allowed to happen in terms of electioneering, avoiding civil rights issues, avoiding those potential claims, claims under various voters' rights laws and, again, various civil rights laws. You run a very real possibility that if you don't have a person at the helm in that office for a period of time to manage it through the whole process, you can see the possibility of violations and then actions brought against the town. So the purpose of chapter 41, section 14, is to give the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to fill that position and to fill it for the entire time until a successor is appointed and qualified for that position. And again, where the person serves at the pleasure of the board, that kind of obviates or eliminates the need to have a specified term because that's an issue that can be revisited by the board, should that be necessary, based on the performance of the individual. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you very much, Mark. I think clarifying that is very important to us, so we all understand the situation that the town is in at present. So I thank you very much. I personally think we'll be all set, but you can stick around if you want to do what you want, buddy.
I have a little bit more time. I would just offer if anybody had any questions before I sign off, because it would be a shame if I signed off and there are questions afterwards. So if anybody did have any questions, Mr. Chairman, and you'd like me to answer them before I have to leave, I'd be happy to do that.
Good point. Board members, do you have any questions at the moment you'd like to ask, Mark? No, I don't see anybody, so. Thank you, Mark, again. All right.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, members of the board. Have a good night.
Thank you. So Jen, I'm going to hand it over to you to get us started on this appointment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members. I'm very pleased to be able to come before the board this evening because this has weighed very heavily on my shoulders to try to come up with some kind of solution, despite the fact that the appointment typically has come through the town manager with a recommendation to the board, who then, you know, with a majority vote will ratify that appointment. As you know, this is a very unusual appointment in the sense that all other department heads are appointed through my office, through my direction, with the exception of the police chief. So one of the things that I've treated this with, the same kind of respect and level I would if I was looking into getting any highly qualified person for a particular position. Having said that, I just want to remind everybody that when the first posting went out, there were no qualified applicants. Matter of fact, there were some people who applied that were so far off the qualifications that it would have been embarrassing to try to put them before you. But having said that, after retaining a town clerk consultant, who has been trying to work with the town clerk's office in helping us prepare for a whole number of things and to try to fill that shoes and to work directly with Ann and the department and any of the election workers, I also brought that town consultant on with the hope that they might be able to, if we posted for this temporary town clerk role after being informed by Mark Rich, that, you know, no matter what the circumstances are, it allows the Board of Selectmen to have the ability to appoint a clerk for the very reasons of the importance level that Mark Rich has put out there. So after having Dawn McCannawitz retained, and even though she's been also working in the town clerk's office, she has a very large directory of retired clerks and also current clerks. And she reached out to several dozens of retired clerks, and no retired clerks want to take on this role. Because this election is of historic proportions, it's very different, it has much longer lead-up times for early voting, it's having direct mail voting, there are changes to the scheduling, and there's also changes to the way that the elections themselves are going to be conducted. So nobody wanted to touch it with a 10-foot pole. That left us with trying to also potentially recruit anybody who may be actively employed if they were so inclined to be informed that we might be looking for a temporary town clerk positional appointment. And so after having done that, the person that I have selected, after doing both the vetting of interviews with the three candidates, one candidate will not be able to come at all before the election. The other person I did not deem as highly qualified. As the person that I have selected to place before the board, who has gone through a vetting process, which includes not only gauging their written materials that they've sent, but actually sitting and having a very in-depth interview with myself and also having a tangential introduction to the town clerk's office. In addition, I had also reached out to three references who all had very extensive reference histories as town clerks, someone even being as many as 36 years and still acting as a consultant. And I provided you this evening with the original cover letter, the resume for Ms. Jenkins, and also the reference comments summary. Based on all of those, I'd like to just enumerate a little bit about Ms. Jenkins for the edification of the board and for the community. Ms. Jenkins has served with direct municipal experience in clerk's office in election capacities for the better part of 20 years. She has taken on the roles and is currently a certified municipal clerk, notary, justice of the peace, and has been an ethics commission liaison and a public records access officer. She has been not only a town clerk, but has been an interim town clerk on two separate occasions. She has also served as an elections consultant. And most notably, she was the elections coordinator for the, what was the town of Framingham, now the city of Framingham, a very large municipality, for over seven years. All of the feedback that I received related to her experience, I'll touch on. But she also has an educational background, where she has a baccalaureate degree from Framingham University. She has served communities in addition to Framingham, the towns of Southborough, and currently the towns of Maynard. She has had long, I always look for this in a candidate, I look for people who have long-serving proportions of their resume to communities, in addition to being highly qualified. As you can see from her resume, that she does have the notable experience that we're looking for. And I would argue, based on the references that I have obtained, that all of them who have more than 25 years of experience have said, "There is no better person to actually take on elections than Michelle Jenkins", and is very familiar with technology. They describe Ms. Jenkins as being highly organized, very attentive to detail, being an asset to any community that she would serve. They use such language as being able to hit the ground running in terms of elections would not require any training. Even two references who have worked directly with her said, "There's never been any problems overseeing elections, including the entire electoral process", which was bequeathed to her by the town clerk at that time. She was considered to be highly focused in adhering to professional standard state laws associated with the town clerk position. They also described her as being someone who is very intimately aware of the technology that goes with elections. Actually, she was asking me during my interview with her a variety of technology questions, and I had referred to the office of the clerk with both former employees asking if this is indeed what happens there and what they had for actual technology to be able to be comfortable with that. I've been also informed that she's someone that not only can run a clerk's office hands down, but that she would not let us down. I look at this as a very, you know, difficult call to answer a community to come in, not only prior to an election, but also to be a team player. And her references also describe her as someone who is that and has very strong customer service skills, is an excellent and is a very good listener, and has an empowering personality to work in helping others achieve results. And as you know, the clerk has to be very inspiring to election workers and boards of registrants to get them to be able to handle the very important roles that they need to. And the last thing I would say is that, aside from the other aspects of being in the clerk's office, obviously, the management of vital records, public records, and ethics disclosures are very important, and that is something she is also very familiar with. I wanted to give this background so that, you know, the board would be comfortable with understanding what process I went through to try to put the best candidate before you. I do believe unequivocally, Michelle Jenkins is the best candidate. If I had the ability to make that appointment right now, I would. And that is why Mark Rich is trying to help the community look at this and try to resolve the dilemma that we face. But I will tell you that this evening, we also have Ann from the clerk's office, who is here to support the need to do this appointment as soon as possible and to get the best and most qualified person in there. I hope I didn't overstep by bounds, Ann, by saying that. But I do appreciate your being here. And Michelle did not know that she was going to be on, so I just thought it was very important for the board to understand that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would strongly recommend Ms. Jenkins to be appointed as temporary town clerk. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Jen. Board members, do we have comments or questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Megan.
So it could very well be the unpopular opinion, based on everything that was said, but I just wanted to, I guess, express a thought. I absolutely think that Ms. Jenkins is absolutely qualified for the position, and I have no problem recommending her to be temporary town clerk. However, I am still apprehensive about it being without some sort of stated date to reconsider. I don't necessarily think we need a stated end date because I understand that we need a town clerk and that we're coming upon a residency requirement at the town meeting, and we're coming upon an election and a potential spike in the pandemic. But I do think that we need to have some sort of point in the future to reconvene, to reconsider if we should post a permanent position or continue with temporary status. I know that's probably not a well-liked statement right now, but that's my personal opinion, that I don't necessarily want to put an end date on the temporary town clerk, but I'd like to potentially reconvene in six months to see where we're at and if it's appropriate to post for the position or if it's appropriate to continue with the temporary status. Because, I mean, a lot could change. We could have the townspeople decide that they want residency, and I don't think that we are able to just discredit that. I do believe that residency will be overturned at town meeting and that we'll be able to, you know, consider an out-of-town permanent town clerk. But I think that we have a lot on our plate to consider, so we shouldn't just, you know, make this appointment and then put it off to the side. Just my thought.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before I think we go through asking all the opinions of the board, I think it would be really respectful for the candidate to maybe speak. I know I spoke on her behalf, but she's quite capable of speaking about her background and I think that would be important because maybe some of the concerns that somebody may have about the knowledge of this community or the ability to lead in that office might be enlightened by the candidate herself, if I may so ask through you, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's a good point, Jen. I sometimes don't always think in the right logical sequence. So yes, Michelle, I'm sure the board would be eager to, I know I am, to just hear from you and see about you taking this position. So I open the floor to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come speak with you. I just truly believe that, you know, employment is a personal, you know, thought, and Oxford makes a lot of sense to me. And I live right around the corner. I have kind of a unique situation where, when I moved out to Whitensville in 2007, my dad, who's my best friend, he, both of us purchased condos right next to each other. So since then, I've gotten married and I now have an eight-year-old daughter who is best friends with my father. So that's one of the reasons why I really have to stay here because I kind of care for him, too. But I understand the people's thoughts on the residency requirement. Many years ago, you know, I worked for an elected town clerk, and I was all for that. But times have changed, especially in the clerk's office. We have, the state changes certain things when it comes to vitals, elections, you know, at the drop of a dime. I mean, for instance, I mean, unfortunately, with the whole pandemic, elections changed. You couldn't just, you didn't have anything. Nothing was solid, you know? Nothing was really truly clarified for all of us clerks in the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth. So we're all scrambling to create our own process. Things change and, like, on a day-to-day basis, and you have to change with them. And you have to figure out the best way to fit your office. And it's not always the best to have, for instance, an elected town clerk because you only have a certain amount of people that could run for that position. And I truly believe with all the changes from the state level going down, that not everyone is qualified to take on the numerous changes. And there's not really anyone qualified to take on, you know, come right in and take on all these changes with the presidential election. This will be my fifth one. And it's difficult. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, but it is a difficult one. We are getting inundated with all the mailing, and it's very time-consuming. I'm sure you've heard over the news, we're working seven days a week, clerks. I've literally been in the office for the primaries seven days a week, Saturday, Sunday. Plus now, with the new changes from the legislature coming down due to the pandemic, we now have to work Saturdays and Sundays. And early voting used to be 11 days prior to a presidential. It's now 14. So aside from running, you know, early voting, you also have, that changed the voter registration deadline for us, which is now 10 days. So you have to adjust everything in the office in order to fulfill all your legal requirements. For instance, as the town council was just mentioning, Friday was, actually, it was Saturday, was the deadline to get all federal, you know, the ballots overseas. And elections will call you if you're not doing your job properly. So those needed to be out. And we didn't receive the ballots until Wednesday. So all of us clerks, we were scrambling to get these things emailed and mailed out to all the overseas citizens and military personnel. And if I'm willing to help out, I understand this is a very, very difficult election. And right after the election, you have to take into consideration if things don't end then, we have 10 days to certify the election. But you also have to have your annual census mailed out, which means you have to go to bid for that, get that produced and ready to mail. You have to be prepared because dog licenses and in-your-town cat licenses go on, you know, have to be mailed out. There's a lot of things that go with it. And not just anyone can come off the street to be a town clerk. It's not easy. There's things that people don't understand that we actually do. And I constantly get, "Oh, I didn't know you do that." It's not so easy nowadays to have an elected town clerk or have a residency requirement. But I am willing to come and help out and I truly believe that I'm up for the challenge, which it's going to be challenging. But I've always been a team player, and I truly believe that, you know, everyone has to work as a team in order to get this done because we have elections looking down on us on a day-to-day basis. And they can see exactly what we're doing through our VRIS. That's our voter registration system. And they're constantly checking on us.
All right. Thank you very much, Michelle, for that information. And not to put you on the spot, but didn't know if you, I saw you shaking your head a few times while Michelle was adding her points. And didn't know if you wanted to say a couple of words. In regards to how difficult. The job is right now or how important to have a. A clerk that knows what they're doing. I know you know what you're doing and not saying that in that respect. What I'm saying is that. She has a lot of experience, probably beyond what you've been trained.
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I. The office definitely needs a clerk. I've been working probably fifty to sixty-five hours a week. Even before Laurie left. We have election deadlines looming, as Michelle said, and I'm only one person. We just got Tom Sullivan back temporarily. He's a godsend, but he's only been there three days, so. Yeah, we really need someone in there. Post haste.
All right. Well, thank you, Anne, for that information. So. Again, I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you.
You muted yourself.
Excuse me? Yes, okay. Thank you, Anne, again, for that information. I think it's important that the board hears how tough your job really is and. Is getting even worse and I thank you, Michelle. You know, for the information, but it's ultimately up to the board and we've heard from Megan, so. If there's someone else that wants to add. Or make a motion or whatever. Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Just in regards to what Select Mantrano said. I, I don't disagree that, you know, in the future, we should definitely look at more of a permanent position. I don't feel tonight putting a timeframe. On the motion to appoint Michelle here is. Needed. It is in the title itself of temporary town clerk. We're appointing a temporary town clerk. And as a board, we, we know that. At any given point in the future, we can readdress the position. And we can bring it up to the town manager. And make the decision that it's time to go forth with a more permanent position. It's really important to get this town clerk hired, as we've heard tonight so far with everything that we have going on. So I'm just trying to make the argument that we just. Make, make the motion to appoint as a temporary town clerk. And in the future, if we need to readdress it, we're more than able to.
Is that a motion that you're making, Mike, or just a recommendation?
It's, it's the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? All right, not seeing any more discussion and.
Dennis, I think John is trying to speak, but he's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Oh, okay. There you go, John.
There's no question about the capability of Michelle. I mean, I've seen her resume and. Listened to the town manager's boring remarks regarding references, et cetera. And there's no doubt in my mind that she is not a qualified person. She certainly is. And she would make an excellent temporary. Town clerk. I, I just have some questions. For Michelle. Number one. This is a very. Strange situation that you're being put in because of the residency requirement. I understand that. You, at, at the present time, have a full-time position as a town clerk in the town of Maynard. Is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, and that town is slightly smaller than Oxford. You're probably around. Ten or twelve thousand people, population-wise. So you're pretty close to us.
Yes.
And. You, you have secured a full-time position there. I, I can't understand why you would take the chance. Of applying for a temporary position here. Knowing the uncertainty that's involved here. Number one. The residency requirement may not pass at town meeting. Yet, it may get defeated, okay, the request to do away with the residency requirement. So. That right there is going to hinder your chances of becoming. A full-time employee in the town clerk's office. You appear to be willing to take that chance?
I am at this time. I'm willing to help, help you out. I think, I think it may be voted, you know, to, to remove the residency requirement. So I, I'm willing to take that chance and then if it does have to get posted again, I will definitely run. I will, you know.
Apply for it.
Look into being appointed. Yes.
It's, it appears as though the consensus of the board, and I'm not speaking for all members of the board, but it appears that the consensus is. That we are willing to go along with the temporary appointment for a specific period of time. And then when the time is right, that we post for a full-time town clerk.
Yes, I understand.
And you have no problem with that?
Well, it's my hopes that I can prove to you that you would like me to stay on.
I was hoping you would say that because I think that this may give us the opportunity. To see how well you can do the job and obviously. On paper and on references, recommendations, you appear to be top-notch. And if that's the case, you do have an excellent chance of the board. You know. Voting for you or confirming the management's appointment of you because I, I firmly believe that if you are doing the job. And when the, when the appointment comes due for a full-time position. If the manager is satisfied with what you're doing, she is going to recommend you. I have no doubt in my mind. She will do that. And at that point in time, the board of selectmen would have to make a decision. Whether you in fact have done the job. To the manager's satisfaction and the town's satisfaction. And when we're looking at other candidates that have been listed on the posting. You'd probably be read on the top of that list and we would be fools for not selecting you. If, you know, you screwed up between now and the end of the temporary period. So the chance is yours, but it not only benefits you. But it benefits the board of selectmen because it gives us a chance to see you. And it also gives us an opportunity to do what we're supposed to do is to post the position. And select the most capable candidate for the town of Oxford.
Exactly.
I just wanted to let you know that that's my feeling. I don't know how the other members feel. But personally, that's my feeling and I, I think you're going to do a good job, but, you know. Time is something we, we have no control over, you know, we're slaves to time.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, John. Yes, Sharon. Yes.
First of all, Michelle, I just would like to say thank you for coming out of the woodwork and, and. And rescuing us at this particular time. I, I appreciate your. Your, your glimpse, a little bit of a glimpse into the, into your personal life in terms of. Where you live and certainly I used to work in Maynard myself. It's not next door. So I understand all of that. I think that. As the last board person to speak, I think that it's been. Extremely well documented that you are very well qualified for the job. In addition, you know, you speak very well. You're very. You're clearly very intelligent about the job and what it entails and for that, we're grateful. We do have this one looming issue, which is the residency requirement. And, you know, certainly as the clerk and, and potentially the ethics officer and so forth. I think it would be difficult for us as a board to offer you the position. Temporarily indefinitely, if that makes any sense. I don't think that it's, I, I don't think that just from my perspective, I think that would be a challenge to do that. But I think Selectman Sad was right on the point with all of his comments. You know, there's three hundred and fifty-one communities in the Commonwealth, right? So there's three hundred and fifty-one town clerks and. You know, I know how I feel about the residency requirement. I think it's a challenge to get candidates if you do require it. And I'm, you know, I'm hoping that the townspeople will see that too. So. I, once again, I just want to say that I'm very thankful that you're here and that you're willing to do the, the interim slash temporary piece. And then gives us just the opportunity to reevaluate it. It gives you an opportunity to evaluate the town too. I mean, so I just wanted to say thank you for that and thank you for all of the time that you've put into, you know, coming so far. And I'm so sorry you have to work seven days a week. It's, it's rough. It's really, it's hard. It's like you never feel like you never get a break and we understand completely. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sharon. Well, I have heard all the board members and the only, I. I'll state my piece because after talking to Mark Rich, I must be hearing words that I don't understand or something because. It seems like he explained that temporary means it's all under the board's discretion. Putting a time limit on, on the whole process is just. Useless because we can come back to this at any time. It's a board appointment. But that's all I'm going to say. I'm going to just, at this point, then entertain a motion by the board.
So I will make a motion. And if it doesn't get seconded, then I respectfully understand. I will make a motion to. Appoint Michelle Jenkins as temporary town clerk. With the understanding that we will reconvene. In six months to consider the appropriateness of posting for a permanent position or continuing with temporary status. But that the reconvening in six months does not indicate an end to the temporary status. Just a point where the board can reconvene and. See where we're at.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second and a further discussion. Yes, Mike.
Mr. Chairman. The, we had town council here tonight to give his recommendations. On the kind of internal struggle that we're having as a board. The suggestion of the town council this evening was to. Not place a time limit on a temporary position. Again, because it's in the name temporary position. And as a select board, we have a policy, policy two thousand and one. On town council that says when council is brought before the board to assist in an issue. That we are to abide by his suggestion. So based off that policy, I would like to amend the motion at hand. To appoint Michelle Jenkins as a temporary town clerk with no. Additional stipulations.
And I'll second that amendment. So what we would do then, is there any other discussion by the board?
Yes, I would like to comment, if I may, Mr.
Yes, sure. Yes.
I did not place a time limit on the temporary status for his recommendation. I did, however, add a point for us to reconvene to consider where we're at. And I specifically indicated that it was not a time limit on the temporary status. But just a point that we can come back together. So I don't feel that I was out of line with his recommendation. But I do respect your opinion.
We can come back at any time. Because it's a temporary position. So, but let's, we'll vote on the amendment. The. Yeah, the adjustment to the motion. I'll, I'll call for a vote on that.
No. No.
Yes. No.
And I'll vote yes. That's three negative. Two yeses, so the motion, the addition fails. So if there's no other discussion. Then I will call for a vote on the original motion. As stated by Megan.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
No. Yes.
And I'll vote no. That's three in affirmative, two negative, but the motion passes. And Michelle, you are our temporary town clerk. Jen, we have.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the vote from the board. Obviously, I will have to confer with the candidate to, you know, to see if. They'll be willing to accept that and outline the terms for the employment because this is just the appointment piece. So I would, you know, be able to share that with the board after conferring. With the candidate on the, you know, the different aspects of employment because it's. Even though you're just making that appointment, obviously, there are other things to consider from. Hours work to salary to benefits to all of those kinds of things. So. I will have to do that and I would let you know what Ms. Jenkins' decision will be.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Jen. Michelle, would you like to say anything in closing?
I just want to thank you all very much and I really appreciate the time. Thank you. I look forward to hopefully working with you soon.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, Anne, so much for adding your inputs. Very helpful. Thank you for your service, you know, that's.
Thank you, Anne.
Do a great job. Yes.
Great job.
So board members, do we have anything else before we close? No, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Second?
I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. We are adjourned again. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Have a great week.